Hello, everybody. Thank, I'm not gonna bang the gavel just yet. I'm not bringing the meeting to order. We have a technical problem with the recording of our meeting. So feel free to conversate until I bang the gavel, then we'll go and bring the meeting to order. But we have a technical problem, that's one reason. I apologize. Anyone that's been to our meetings know I respect your time and I like to start on time. But this is not anything that the school committee had any control over. So my sincere apology for the little bit of, hopefully, little bit of delay. All right, thank you all for your patience with that. I would like to call the special meeting of the Pawtucket School Committee to order for June 6, 2023 at 5:00 p.m. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Benolo. Ms. Carney. Mr. Chavino. Ms. Doobie. Ms. Fernandez. Ms. Grant. Mr. Shalow.
Hey, may I ask everyone to stand for the buzzer release?
Aye. For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Couple of house cleaning issues. Public participation, for anyone that might have came in late, please come on up and sign up if you would like to talk in public participation. Also, public participation will happen at this desk, please. Don't be shy, come on up. And the first person up, Marsha Fernandez. Oh, before we begin, I apologize. We're gonna limit it to four minutes for each public participating speaker. Yeah, I guess. As long as you get to the microphone. You ready? Okay.
Good evening. Good evening to my fellow school committee members, Acting Superintendent Mercer, Superintendent Candidates Ms. Royale and Ms. Montez McNeil, and this very large crowd of educators here tonight. If I knew this was all it took to get you guys to come to one of our meetings, we would've done this a long time ago. I stand... Can I take this out? I just kinda look at them. I feel like my back's... I stand before you tonight to speak to the decision I made to make a motion to bring the original four superintendent candidates before this committee. A motion that passed 5-2 on May 25th. Since that day, it has been brought to my attention that some members of the Superintendent Search Committee are both publicly and behind the scenes making claims that making that motion was disrespectful to the search committee. Of biggest concern to some of the members is that one of the candidates recommended by the search committee withdrew their application after hearing about the passing of this motion. Although defending my decision is not in any way necessary, I welcome the opportunity to explain why I need this decision. For those of you that are not aware of what this discussion is about or need to be reminded of what happened, let me quickly catch you up. The Superintendent Search Committee was tasked with reviewing resumes and applications, voting on applicants to move on to the interview process, checking references, voting on candidates to recommend to the school committee... And to recommend, I'm sorry, candidates to recommend to the school committee. The fact that this was only a recommendation was made very clear to all members of the Superintendent Search Committee throughout the process. It was also made clear that the seven members of the school committee would have the final say in the appointment of the superintendent. I would like to acknowledge what a major undertaking this was for the entire subcommittee, especially the Superintendent Search Chair. I understand the amount of time and effort that was put into this process because I too was a member of this subcommittee, devoting many hours to the process in addition to my other responsibilities. A process in which I am extremely pleased that I was part of. It became very clear early on that this process... That in this process, that personal and professional biases would play a role in who this subcommittee would recommend be our next superintendent. Although all committee members did not always agree, in my opinion, the group was able to have respectful conversation throughout the process, and more importantly, we all got to know each other a little better. The group voted to recommend only two of the four interviewed candidates to the school committee through a majority rule vote. As I stated in the May 25th school committee meeting, in my opinion, I did not feel we found our next superintendent. I stated that I felt that the school board needed to look at these candidates again as well as the other two candidates that were interviewed. All school committee meetings are recorded and can be viewed on YouTube if you are interested in hearing my exact words and the full discussion. And I respectfully ask that those of you that are gonna come up here and speak, please don't interrupt when I'm speaking because I think that just speaks to all of it. When the question about diversity during the interviews, which were held in public session and can also be viewed online, one of the candidates stated that they were coming from a school district that was 91% white. They also stated that it was important that the other 9% saw teachers that looked like them. Which I completely agree with. However, I also feel that that 9%, or in the case of Pawtucket, over 68% of non-white students should not only see teachers that look like them, they should also see administrators that look like them. Just a quick, very important side note. We have 16 schools in the Pawtucket School District. We have not one black or brown principal. I cannot express enough how much I personally value our educators. Many of you who I've known for many years and know I have not only advocated for students but educators as well. Our white and non-white students need to see they are worthy of all opportunities in education, from educators to administrators. Given the multitude of important issues and strong personalities in our school district, it is crucial that Pawtucket's next superintendent of schools is a leader that has the tenacity to move our extremely diverse district forward despite pressure from outside influences. This leader must be someone that is going to make decisions that are best for the students, educators, and taxpayers of the city despite the pressure and conflict they will face because they will be the face of this school district. Thank you.
My speaker is Marlena.
Marlena, let me wait till you're ready before I say... That's why they'll tell me.
Yep. Hello, many of you know me as Marlena Martin-Stokoviac. I am a member of the Pawtucket City Council for District 6. But more importantly, actually, probably the most important, is I am a mother of two young boys in our school system. Those two boys and their future education is why I was so happy to be a part of the Superintendent Search Committee for the city. Because the person that will become our next superintendent matters to their future. As a busy, working mom, I spent four weeks with members of the committee vetting candidates, calling referrals, discussing the type of candidate we were looking for because all of that mattered. I believe we did our job well and delivered great finalists for this committee to continue to vet. Then the school committee, led by one of the search committee members, decided that all that work we had done wasn't enough and those four weeks hadn't produced the right candidate. Now, as a committee, you have decided to bring back some of the candidates that the search committee had come to the conclusion were not the right fit for the position currently. But one of those finalists that we had sent was the only candidate to get a unanimous vote to move forward for your consideration. Two of those votes coming from members of the school committee. And in comparison, one of the candidates you brought back to interview was brought up for a vote twice and failed to get enough support to be a finalist by the search committee, both times. Now, let me say this. All the candidates were great. Some, one day, will make great superintendents. But the search committee was tasked with getting down to the candidates that we felt were top of the bunch with qualities and qualifications that would benefit our school district, the teachers, and our students. And when I left that meeting, I was confident we had done that. The finalist who garnered that unanimous support is a multi-language learner herself, coming from immigrant parents, went to some of the best colleges in the area, then worked her way up in the Boston Public Schools. One of her references, a former Boston superintendent, said, "You won't find anyone more committed, dedicated, and impactful." She was named East Boston Times Woman of the Year. One reference said her core values are equity and opportunity. She has taught, she has principled, she has central office. My kids go to a dual-language school here in this city, clearly because that is a priority of our demographic. And this candidate took a failing school and transformed it into a successful dual-language school. She has overseen budget, she has overseen school renovations, she has worked closely with teachers to help turn around their classrooms. When teachers needed support, they turned to her. As a multi-language learner and a daughter of immigrants, she will be able to connect to our families like no superintendent has before her. She sat down during our interviews with confidence and conviction about education, her experience, and the goals she has for the city. As a search committee, we delivered you our top choices. We don't have crystal balls to see what will happen, but we did what was asked of us and we did it well. I took it very seriously because the future of my children's education matters. Your committee decided to bring back candidates that are lovely again. But I hope tonight it has become clear that the candidate that the search committee unanimously said Pawtucket would be proud to have as our next superintendent is one of these two tonight. Thank you.
Up next is Ron. Ron, please let me know when you're ready and I'll start it.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ron Boebre, for the record. I am president of the Pawtucket Teachers Alliance. I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Agnes Little School. I'm a proud graduate of Pawtucket Public Schools. In March, the Pawtucket School Committee created a superintendent... And I'm gonna go quick because you're timing me. In March, the Pawtucket School Committee created a Superintendent Search Committee skillfully cheered by Ms. Doobie, charged with the task to do the arduous work of reviewing applications, checking references, interviewing the best applicants from those received, and ultimately recommending the best candidates to become the next Pawtucket School Department Superintendent. A committee of nine individuals representing our students' families, educators, classified employees, and city and school government was formed. This committee collectively and separately spent an enormous amount of time combing through applications and resumes, calling references, conducting research, interviewing, debating, and deliberating, ultimately landing on the two recommendations as finalists made to this body on May 25th. Upon the presentation of the two recommendations, a school committee member, also a member of the subcommittee who voted in favor of both recommended candidates, stated, quote, "I don't think we found our next superintendent." She then went on to make a motion and received a second to bring forth four candidates previously interviewed by the subcommittee, ignoring the subcommittee's recommendations. Following this hypocrisy, perhaps a personal agenda or a favor for a friend, much discussion took place with comments both against and in favor of the motion to bring in all four candidates for interviews before the full committee rather than accept the recommendations made after tedious, vigilant consideration. Those against dismissing the subcommittee recommendations stated, quote, "It's important to have processes. There's a reason you have different stakeholders at the table because you see different things. For this body to move forward and disregard the work that a subcommittee of stakeholders that involves parents, community members, teachers, administrators, non-certified, and city representatives because the work that was done didn't yield the results we wanted, so we will just go in on our own and arrive at a decision is a disservice to the idea that we listen to stakeholders when we make decisions," end quote. Another member said, quote, " processes are important. We agreed to a process put forth by, put forth a subcommittee, involved stakeholders who reached a decision," end quote. Those in favor of disregarding the subcommittee of stakeholders stated, quote, "I know how much time and effort the committee put into this work. I completely want to honor that. But as the full board, we do have the right to have an interview process and I would like to be able to have the opportunity to interview the entirety of the candidates," end quote. Another candidate simply said, quote, "We are the seven individuals who have the final say," end quote. The Pawtucket School Committee's own core beliefs and commitments state, "We will engage the community, including parents, caregivers, businesses, elected and appointed officials, civic and faith-based organizations, along with the district's leaders, staff, and students to improve educational outcomes for our students." Yet, this committee... Let me correct that. Five members of this committee, one of whom was a member of the search committee, voting in favor of the two recommended candidates completely disregarded, disrespected, and undermined the work of the nine individuals who painstakingly gave their valuable personal time to participate in this important process. I have recently been accused of not respecting the position of this committee. When a committee's position, taken by what appears to be personal motivation, has a potentially profound negative impact on those we serve and those we represent, you'd better believe it's not respected. The tail feather display of prowess shown by these members makes the silent statement to all of us, those we serve, those we represent, that we have no place in the decision-making process because, quote, "You are the seven members who have the final say." Merriam-Webster defines collaboration as working jointly with others or together, especially in an intellectual manner. The Superintendent Search Committee, established by this full school committee, worked collaboratively to arrive at the recommended finalists. However, five of you seemingly believe that collaborative work... That the collaborative work of the nine members of the subcommittee has no value. How is this collaboration? It is time for this committee to be collaborative, to do what is right for those we serve and those we represent. It is, in fact, what you were elected to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you to all the speakers that spoke to us. Another housekeeping item. Please, we are in a library and I know that you've asked your students to be quiet in libraries. We are gonna be conducting interviews tonight. I ask that all side conversations, all cell phones, devices, please silence them and no communication while we are asking questions and getting the answer back from our two superintendent candidates. So I please ask you to respect that and just because we're in a library. With that, we do have to just, we have to take care of some old business. I need approval. Something happened last month, we had the wrong bill number. So I need approval. Kim Grant's been spearheading and been very influential in making sure that we get ahead of and let the state know we support healthy males for universal free school males. So I need an approval from the committee. I need a motion to approve school committee resolution to support House Bill 2023-H-5639. Do I have a motion? Motion from Ms. Benolo, seconded by Ms. Doobie. Discussion, Mr. Chavino.
I just want to echo what I had mentioned at the last meeting and recognize our state senator, Senator Keno, who was a lead sponsor of this bill, a friend of, obviously, this committee and this city. So I wanted to make sure we recognize Senator Keno.
This focus is the House. Senator Keno did it over in the Senate, she got it passed through. So absolutely, kudos to Senator Keno. And committee member Deputy Chair Grant, thank you very much again for bringing this before us. Any other conversation? All of the favor? Auto oppose? Okay. Now, for the next item for business, on the new business. We're gonna conduct our first superintendent interview. Candidate number one. Can I have Ms. Patricia Royal? Is she... okay. Ms. Royal, thank you very much. Could you take a seat at the microphone? And there's water for you there if you need. And if you don't mind, I'm gonna go over the rules that the school committee has adopted for this interview. We are gonna go, we're gonna start. Each school committee member can ask one question and then a follow-up that is associated with that original question for clarification. We are gonna start with Ms. Benolo and we're gonna go around clockwise, for the way you're saying it. So we're going clockwise and end with Ms. Carney. Again, one question per round and the interview is to last 30 minutes. So I'm just gonna put the timer on. Okay. Are you ready? Okay. Thank you very much for coming today. Ms. Benolo.
Ms. Royal, thank you very much for being here today. I do have a couple of questions for you. But I'll start with the first one. What are your thoughts as far as suspensions, detentions, and the safety of our schools?
That's very important. Good evening, first of all, to everyone. Great question. Suspension, retention, all of that is very important. I would like to say the most important part about that to focus on is how do we help students in different situations? So that would have to be taken on the individualized case. But making sure that we provide students with the services and resources that are needed. Sometimes we have to also include families in that conversation and a part of those strategies to help kids do their best. So that will pretty much be an individualized answer. When it comes to that, we do have student code conduct, definitely. But I think that we, as educators, are always are going to do what's best for students at all times. And that's what I believe. And at times, like I said, it's just, that's an individualized statement or question. But just looking at student data, their performance, what can we do, what strategies, what interventions, really doing all that we can do to ensure that students are successful in our schools.
Thank you.
Ms. Royal, welcome. Ms. Royal, welcome. And thank you for being here this evening. I had an opportunity to watch what I thought was a pretty comprehensive interview that you did with the search committee. I thought you did very well in the interview. I wish you well during this process. I don't have any questions for you.
So I know you had an opportunity to visit our schools. I'd like to hear your impressions of those visits and your takeaways for the Pawtucket School Department.
I visited some wonderful schools. I went to a middle school, a couple elementary schools, got to see the majority of the schools. When I say that you can feel the caring, the dedication, the loyalty to being, that the staff and the administrators have or the students, you can feel it when you walk in the building. I think that's important to provide students and families with the welcoming environment. I felt that totally when I walked into those schools. The administrator was upbeat, they were positive, they was excited about the students, they were sharing all the end-of-the-year events that were coming up. So it was a great experience. I definitely can see the hard work that is being done here in Pawtucket and I just wanna be a part of that hard work that is happening here.
Thank you very much for coming out today. My question is somewhat different from a question I was asked of you during the first interview committee. I wanna know your feelings, what you believe in, what you think of collective bargaining when it comes to running a school district since you're asking to be the superintendent of numerous collective bargaining groups. What is your feelings and opinions on collective bargaining?
I think it's important. I think it's very important that we work together in making decisions. I wasn't expecting some of the conversation, but I definitely believe and agree with a lot that was said, that it is important to take everyone's perspective in consideration when you're making decisions. And to also be transparent, also communicate often throughout the process. I think that's important, I can't disagree with that. Relationship is going to be key for me. I am definitely a relationship person. I believe in everyone coming to the table for the common good of doing what's best for students. And collective bargaining is one of the structures that are in place for that to happen. And following the process procedures, making sure that everyone's voice is heard, make sure that those procedures are followed through. I totally, definitely agree with that. But like I said, the end goal at the end of the day is that we have to do what's best for our students.
Oh, you're saying you agree with collective bargaining?
Oh, definitely.
The rights of collective bargaining. Okay, thank you.
Definitely.
Hi, thank you for coming this evening. My question is about building a team. How would you say you would go about building the district to become one team? And then kind of build your own team to help you support the people in the district?
Yes. Definitely started with hitting the ground, learning. Before I do anything, I want to learn about everything that I can about our district. Making sure that everyone's needs are met, everyone's voices are at the table that need to be heard, and also seeking out those quiet voices that often are not heard. We have to build relationships, make sure that we are moving towards a common goal. At every decision I make, the nucleus of all of my decisions are what's best for students. But at the same time, it's also best that we do for what's important for those people that are on the front line, which is teachers. And I'm glad they're in here because they are the most important person that are in those buildings, are those classroom teachers. Next to a teacher are leaders. Because they are the front line, they make the magic happen in the classrooms. So I feel as a superintendent is my job to make sure that their needs are met, that they get the support, that they get whatever it is they need to make sure that kids are... they get the support, that they get whatever it is they need to make sure that kids are meeting their goal beyond what their expectations are. So I think I have to hit the ground learning first, meeting people, starting to build those relationships. And I think it's important that not only that you build relationships, that you build lasting relationships. It's not exchange, I'm not a transactional person. I believe in that we work together for a common goal. And the more we work together, the more transparent, the more we collaborate, the more we communicate, that's how we get our goal accomplished.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. So I did have one question prepared, but I'm going to ask another question. So you talked about how you're a relationship person, you talked about that a lot in your first interview, and you just talked about it again now. I'm wondering, how, how are you going to build those relationships if you were to get this position? How are you going to build those relationships, knowing that all of these people were here tonight to kind of say that you're not worthy to be here? And that, maybe the wording is not correct, but that the super, that the subcommittee, that the subcommittee voted you did not be here. Is that better? I don't know.
Well, I would like to say.
Let me rephrase that. Okay, excuse me, excuse me, thank you. So I think this is very intimidating, what is going on right now, right? So coming in to be interviewed here, knowing that this whole crowd of people are here, to say that they disagreed with the five of us that made the motion to bring you here, how are you going to build those relationships, knowing that?
Coming into a district, first of all, let me back up a little bit. I applied to be a superintendent of Pawtucket because of the values, the vision and the mission of this district, aligns with my core values. And the people that are in this district are the people I want to work for. I work for them, I work for the students, I work for the families. In order to build relationships, because that's, I'm a very, I'm serious when I hate my back being to you all, because I'll be working for you all, but I just need you to know that I'm here to work for you all. You all make the magic happen. I can't do this job alone, there's no way I could. I have to hear from you all. I'm a teacher at heart, I started as a kindergarten teacher. So everything we need to know is in kindergarten first, but I taught elementary, I supervised K through 12 administrators. I know what it takes, but I know the one thing, is that we got to put a belief system in our students, and the first person that's on the front line of that are my teachers. I got to make sure that you all are on board with my vision, we understand, I'm aligned with your vision, your mission, there's no way I can do this work alone. I need you guys. And I intend for my schedule to be busy, because I want to hear from you. I want to know, okay, Ms. Royal, what is it you need that, okay, that you didn't get? Or what is it that we can sit down and talk about to make a difference in your everyday work? You spend more time in your schools than you do with your family. I know that, I was a teacher. So I got to make sure that you're getting what you need to make it happen for every single kid, it's about every kid that walk, we public education, we take everyone. That's hard. What you do is very hard, I know that. So I'm here, if I get this job, trust me, you will not regret it. I'm going to work 110% for each and every person in this room. If I do something that's wrong, tell me. I am here to learn. When I say I'm, I plan to hit this ground running, I'm hitting this ground running, learning. I need to know what it is that I need to do to make this a better work environment for you, so that, because, there's a book that I read where it says, if you don't feed the teachers, they eat the kids. I believe that. I got to do and make sure you all are happy, because you make the magic happen. If it's more funding, whatever it is, Ms. Royal, we need to, let me know. I'm a very transparent person, as you can see. I love to communicate, I love people, I'm a people lover, I'm a people person, that's who I am. And if I'm not chosen whoever y'all go with, I'm still going to be wishing the best for the kids of Pawtucket, period. So thank you. Hope I answered your question.
Thank you, Ms. Royal. My question today, being a data first, is after looking at the Pawtucket School Department data, what do you see as the largest area for attention and growth?
Graduation rate. And I say that not specifically looking at the number. I say that because it takes everyone, starting in kindergarten, focused on improving academics. That would be one of our areas, and like I said, it would take everyone, it's just not the 12th grade teachers that make it happen, it's all of us. So collectively, we would look at things, doing things differently, sometimes just a little tweak here and there, or maybe God is counseling, create this, this process so we can better track our ninth graders, or our 10th graders, or middle school, where are we with our middle school? So it takes everyone. So when I say graduation, I don't want you to just go straight to the number, I think it's way deeper than that, but that's our end goal, that capping down is the end goal. So that would be my end goal focus.
No, one too. We have 17 minutes.
Okay, so.
What? 17 minutes left.
As you've seen, going around the district, we are very active in our facilities committee and with building opportunities. Can you briefly tell us what experience, if any, that you have had with that?
Yes. I had an opportunity of converting in middle school to an elementary school. So construction, resources, materials, picking our colors, carpet, I've been in the work. It is very rewarding at the end, and I think facilities is important, kids need to have and feel like they're in a safe place. Cleanliness, beautifying the school, making it warm, I learned that from when one of my kids had to go to the hospital often, my oldest daughter, she had a mass on her brain. So we went to Children's Hospital, and that's when I learned that aesthetics of a room makes a huge difference, down to colors. So that was interesting to me, because it was like, oh, I never thought about it that way. So when I became a principal, I changed, just the physical environment of a room changes some students' behavior automatically. So I think that's important, the facilities, and it was very, very refreshing to see all the work that has happened in Pawtucket around the facilities.
Thank you.
Mr. Charbonneau, anything? Ms. Royal, I'll just yield my time back to you. During that interview with the search committee, is there anything that you'd wish you had said differently, or, in other words, I'm going to give you the time back, just to discuss the interview if you want, or anything you might have said that you'd want to clarify on?
Yes, thank you. I just want to add that I'm passionate about what I do. This is, everyone sitting in here, this is a calling. Everyone can't walk in and do anybody's job in any building at any time. To me, education is a calling. I'm passionate about this work, I'm passionate about making sure that every kid is successful. I am passionate about teachers getting what they need, because they are important. I'm passionate about leaders getting what they need. And in that work, I just want to highlight the importance of us coming together. We don't always have to agree, it's okay to disagree, as long as we take that, we could take a different path, but as long as we get to that end goal, which is doing what's best for students. I think that's important, that's just how I always make my decisions, is it going to be best for students? I may not agree with the avenue you want to take, but if it's a different avenue, I'm okay with that, as long as the end goal is what's best for students.
Thank you, Mr. Charbonneau, that was my question. So I yield my time to my other committee members.
Thank you very much. You did answer somewhat about the relationship that you believe needs to be built between the city administration, the school committees. Can you just elaborate, well, what do you think the role of the superintendent to the school committee, communication-wise, looks like under your leadership, if you become a superintendent?
That definitely would be my first step, is finding out how do each one of you want me to communicate? Because I think I need, it's my job to meet your needs, it's my job to communicate as much as you need. That is like in the forefront, I have to make sure that my committee is well aware of what is going on. So I'm kind of like the liaison between the day-to-day work of the district, and then seeing the finance piece and overseeing what's going on in the district with the committee. So it's important that we start building relationships with each other, making sure that I'm meeting your needs as I should be, and I'm putting forth whatever the desires are for improving or maintaining what's going on in our district, that's my role and that's my job. So it's important that we start our relationship from day one. I'm finding out more about you, like I said, I'm a relationship person, so I need to know. So one committee member said, well, I want you to just give me my memo once a week. Another committee member said, okay, I need it twice a week. I'm okay with that. My job is to give you what you need, and so that you're well informed, so we can make informed decisions together.
My question is about the budget. So, you know, the last few years, we've had to, the students and everyone in the communities have had to deal with COVID. With that came a lot of federal funding. With that federal funding came a lot of, you know, supports for the classrooms, you know, S R funds, some things to do to the buildings and things like that. Unfortunately, going forward, most of this money is going to go away. How, how do you see yourself working with your team to try to make sure that the students in the district still get what they need?
Oh, definitely. Well, first, finding out what we have done thus far in details, and then moving forward, looking at what we need to keep in order, again, to make sure students are getting what they need, and what our instructional staff are getting what they need. There are other options, grants, bonds, there are different things that we can do to fill in those gaps. Sometimes it's all about moving funding from one source to another. So I would have to get into the weeds of that, but there are definitely ways that we can make that happen, most definitely.
So can you, what is your experience with community schools? How, how do you think they could add value, how more community schools could add value here in Pawtucket?
Okay, I started smiling because, that was one of the reasons why I did apply for Pawtucket, because myself, I opened a community school. And that is one of my mantras, at the top of every letterhead said, "We educate the whole child." When you're doing a community school, it is all about bringing resources into the schools, and then the schools going into the community, so we can build the bridge between the school and the community. That takes a lot of making sure that we have the resources that families and students need. It's the wraparound services for the kids, but it's also wraparound services for the families. So for example, what we did in my school was, we had a parent resource center. And in that resource center, I set it up, I put computers in there, and it was all about helping our parents get their GEDs, it was all about helping our parents apply for application, job applications. We also hired a nurse, I got a full-time nurse, to provide some of those services to the families. So it's all about finding out what families need in that particular community, and then working through. I also hired an additional social worker, and my social worker was slightly different than everyone else's. When I hired my social worker, it was made, they made very clear that one big part of your job is bringing the resources to our families. So my social worker got into the community, so if they needed their light bill paid, she knew how it was. And I called it hand-in-hand support. So it wasn't about just passing a parent a card and saying, oh, here, here's where you go to get your light bill paid. They took them there, stood side by side, hand in hand, and made sure they received the services. So I think it's important that wraparound services not only happen for the kid, but also for the families, because when families are better, kids are better. It also impact academics. So I was able to do extended learning program during the week. I was also allowed to hire retired teachers that came in during the day, and also afforded me the opportunity to do Saturday Academy, where we did math and science academy. Because when you do that, it afforded me to bring in some of the resources. So after every science activity, my kids got to eat what they recreated at Saturday school. But it's all about those wraparound services, not only for students, but also for those families.
For you, 10 minutes, 10 minutes to do it. Do I have the time?
Okay. In Pawtucket, we, I'm sure you know, we do have a couple of dual-language programs in some of our elementary schools. Could you share some of your experience leading dual-language programs in your career?
Yes, we currently have a couple of dual-language schools in the district that I currently work in. It's an awesome program. It is definitely designed to meet the needs of our students. I think the continuation of providing them with those strategies, those MLL strategies are important, and then also supporting teachers and finding out what they need to continue to be successful with the MLL program. I've worked very closely with MLL, we've expanded our MLL program currently in our current district, because it is a very important component in meeting the needs of our students. So that's been my experience, also with funding those positions as well. So like I said, it's possible, it's just about setting those goals and those expectations to meet the needs of our kids, and that's definitely a successful program that needs to continue.
Ms. Beno.
So, where are you to get this position? How often do you believe that a superintendent needs to be in schools and visible to the staff?
Oh, great question. Highly visible. Like I said, I'm a teacher at heart, that's who I am first, before, and I walked in several positions, but I'm a teacher at heart. My happy place is the classroom, my happy face is the school. And I would visit schools just to touch base, get the feel, find out what teachers need. Sometimes that's the only time, you know, they have something, can I put you aside for a minute? Sure. And sometimes you get important information just on those informal walks. Those are important, and that's plus building relationships. I need to be in the building to see what's going on. I need to see, and I'm not meaning, meaning from a evaluative point, I mean from a relationship building point. And I need to get to know my people that I'm working for better, and in order to do that, they have to see me, we need to talk, we got to see each other. So that's my happy place is being in schools.
May I ask a second part?
I will yield my time to Ms. Beno.
So, okay, I'll be quick. So, over the past few years, because of all the activities that there has been in our district, there are a lot of meetings going on, there are meetings with Riley, there are meetings with, I don't know, lots of people, but it seems like our administrators are forever on the phone, and forever in meetings, and they're going from one meeting to another meeting to another meeting, which would make you invisible. How do you propose to balance that?
So one way to balance that would be to streamline as many meetings as possible. So that's getting to know each purpose of each meeting, because sometimes we got a meeting over here, that may have the meeting be the same thing that's going to be discussed in this particular meeting. So finding out what those purposes of those different meetings are, how often are we pulling our leaders and teachers out of the building, and then how can we streamline this process? So looking at the purposes of the meeting, length of time of the meeting, frequency of the meeting, outcomes of the meeting, why is this meeting needed? Because there's a lot of meetings that go on that's not even needed. Some meetings can be just put on a memo and sent through email. I totally get it, we have a whole lot of meetings going on, but it can be streamlined and it can be cut down, because again, if it's not pushing what students need, if it's not pushing what teachers need, then we can put it in a memo, send it out, and then we'll keep moving forward. But the first step would be to find out the purpose of each meeting, so we can start But the first step would be to find out the purpose of each meeting so we can start looking at. And then getting feedback from the people that's doing the work. Do you feel this meeting is important? Well, do you feel that we need to meet this often? So it's just having that um, clarity, that communication and that open line of collaboration around what is needed in each meeting.
I'm all set? I didn't know if she had another round of questions, Ms. Beno. Um, no one else have any questions from the body? All right. With that, thank you very much. You um, are more than welcome to uh, leave, we will be in touch. Uh, if you have any parting statements to say to the board, feel free to take this time right now. Um, if you can get it in under four minutes and seventeen seconds. Sixteen, fifteen, fourteen.
Well, first, I just wanna say thank you for this opportunity. Um, I really appreciate, I, 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 I felt this gentleman's speech. I felt the room. Um, I just wanna say thank you. I am here to serve. I believe that um, superintendent is about serving, serving the community. I wouldn't be here or anybody would be here if it was not for our students and our families there first. And then like I said, the leaders and the teachers. Uh, teachers, you, you are my heart. If I get a job, you'll see it. Um, you'll know it, we'll become best friends. Um, but um, but it's important that, like I said, I just wanna just say thank you for this opportunity. Just to be sitting in this seat, I'm blessed. And I just say thank you for your time.
Very much. Is the next candidate in the room or? Lee, did you uh, set her up in another room? Did you set the doctor up in another room or is she in the room? Dr. McNeil, are you in the room? There's a C of L, I can't see her. Lee, could you? Hey, just wanna go over what is gonna happen going forward to committee notes. But we set this for thirty minutes, it'll be a thirty-minute interview. We're gonna ask each, uh, school committee member is gonna ask you one question each in a clockwise motion. We're gonna start with Ms. Beno and with Ms. Connie. Uh, the committee member can ask one question and a follow-up that is associated with the original question to get more clarification if needed. Um, again, that's for thirty minutes. And then at the end, I'll let you be able to have um, some parting words, okay? Are you all set to go?
Yes.
You ready?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Beno, go ahead.
So thank you for being here, Dr. McNeil. Um, I did a revisit of the interviews today, just to make sure I was on the right page. Um, but one of the things that wasn't really talked about during the interviews were suspensions, um, detentions, and school safety. So can you give me your thoughts on those three things?
So I do think that the number one priority of this job is school safety. So um, that's first and foremost, making sure that we're working with law enforcement, with our leaders, with um, the community on school safety. So that's by far the number one job that a superintendent has. And we need to make sure that we are, um, making sure our families feel safe, uh, sending their students to school and our staff feel safe in our schools. With respect in, with respect to detention and suspensions, um, it's really important that our students be able to be in school. So I would say that we have to look at what, what are our current practices? And what are we doing to amend our students' behavior so that they can restore uh, any offense that they might do in the building? And really consider how does the um, discipline um, reflect the action of the student? Um, so I think that that's a very good question. And we need to be able to assure that students, staff, and families uh, feel safe in the school. And we need to make sure that we are addressing the behavior such that um, students can uh, repair any damage that they do as well as um, uh, be successful if they can't return to school. Um, we're also addressing their needs there. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. McNeil. Welcome to Pawtucket and thank you for being here. Uh, I had the opportunity to watch what I thought was a pretty comprehensive interview with the search committee. Uh, I thought you performed well, I wish you well during this process. I don't have any questions for you.
Uh, Dr. McNeil, I know that you had an opportunity to visit our schools. Um, I'd like to hear your impressions after those visits. Um, just in general of the Pawtucket schools, areas that you identified as strengths or areas you identified as kind of might be targets on if you were to get this position.
Thank you so much. I wanna acknowledge um, Superintendent Mercer, who was a phenomenal host of uh, my trip around Pawtucket. And uh, we visited the Green School and the Potterburn School. And Dr. Jacobs uh, toured me around the school as did uh, Mrs. Depot. And I continue to be impressed at the resources um, available to the Pawtucket schools. Not saying that they're a hundred percent comprehensive, I'd have to learn more about that. But um, it is clear that the community supports the schools and um, that there is a great love and devotion uh, of the staff and the leaders in the school for the students and the families in the community. I was impressed at how many people I met along the way that either went to the Pawtucket schools or grew up in their practice to become from a teaching assistant to a teacher or principal, as, as it was for Ms. um, Mrs. Depot. So the commitment that I see, the love and passion for the work is here. Um, so that was a wonderful strength. Um, I know some of the questions that came up. Oh, and I also enjoyed very much going to Green uh, because it is the dual-language school. So I got to interact with some of the students in Spanish, which I very much enjoyed, and so did the students. I think that they were happy to be able to talk to somebody else who was visiting in the classroom. Um, so I still have wonderings. Uh, I was only in a couple of classrooms, I did get to interact with students um, and meet some of the staff. And, and I did see a few people here who I did meet today, so I was excited to see that. I, I didn't get the chance to say hello. So there's a lot of people here today, which is another thing that uh, to me means that uh, the staff and the families are really committed to whoever is the next leader here. Um, and I think that that's really powerful and important because whoever becomes the next superintendent, perhaps it shall be me, uh, will need the support of this community to uh, transition um, into this role. Uh, so some of the areas that I still have questions around are the differences in the academic success of, success of students across the schools. And um, how are we supporting that? I learned a little bit more about some of the positions being in um, SR funds and how do we make sure that we continue to uh, support the schools? At least in the fashion that they're currently supported is a concern for the next superintendent. And um, and I'm curious to learn more about the instructional practices and the way we support our teachers in the classroom through coaching, through interventions for students. And um, those are the things I'm still wondering about. And, and that I learned also through the search process that are a concern of the community, the school committee, and um, perhaps everyone in Pawtucket, so.
All right. Thank you very much again, Doctor, for coming down to Pawtucket to be interviewed for this uh, extreme, extremely incredible opportunity to be superintendent of the best school district in the state. Uh, what do you, I'm gonna give you a completely open-ended question. I wanna know your beliefs, what you think, what you, what you feel about collective bargaining when it comes to running a school district. You have, you're gonna have multiple collective bargaining groups, I would like to hear your opinion on it.
Sure. I think that we need to do what's, I am the lead negotiator for the Needham Public Schools. Um, and I have very much enjoyed that process. I have built a relationship with our um, association in, in Needham that is very positive. And I think that we need to do what's best for staff, for students, and for our, um, regarding our fiscal responsibilities. So I think that is not done at the table. I think that is done prior to the table and building relationships and making sure we're not um, using the table as a, as a, a stage. I think we need to be honest in what we can do and honest in what we can't do. Um, and again, I think it starts way before the table in establishing a positive relationship with uh, the associate of the union in this case or um, those that you're bargaining with so that we're not always starting at zero, zero, zero percent, but also what is realistic. Um, and um, have an understanding that we're, we will do the best we can for our staff um, so that we can do the best we can for our students and we will be fiscally responsible while doing it.
All right, uh, just a follow-up on, you are a lead negotiator in Needham? On how many contracts?
Five.
Five. And I, I should note this, since I apologize if I don't for my ignorance. What's the size of the uh, uh, body that you negotiate with? What's the teacher pool in Needham?
We are, well, we're about eleven hundred people um, who work for Needham. Uh, so each, it depends. So the teachers is our largest pool, it's probably around six hundred and fifty. Um.
Yeah, I just wanted to see what the, what it's, if it's close to Pawtucket enough. Thank you very much for your answer.
Thank you.
Um, hi, thank you for coming tonight. Um, in regards to building, um, building teams, um, the, um, we have um, the um, employees and associates that are out in the buildings, out in the field with the kids every day. And then we have staff that is at the administration building. How do you see yourself, you know, building those relationships and building those teams with the schools and the administration?
So I have to say, I was very much turned around a few times today as I was walking the administration building. There's a lot of doors and entrances and exits. So um, I got to meet a lot of people. And I know that if I'm elected or selected as the superintendent, that um, I would have many more to meet. So I would seek opportunities to uh, meet casually and both um, uh, professionally with the teams so that I can better understand what the needs are of the different constituent groups. So uh, opportune meet and greets with coffee um, as well as um, you know, meetings to um, purposely make sure that I am addressed, meeting all the constituent groups. Because one of the groups I did not hear, actually, I did not get a lot, an opportunity really to talk to the, to the staff and the schools. I did visit a couple of classrooms, but I didn't get a chance to talk to teachers too much. I also didn't get a chance to talk to our student leadership groups. And I'm really interested in hearing their voice and what their needs are for the district. Um, so, and also I haven't um, had any chance to really to interact with parents. So that would, that's another group that I would like to spend some time with to better understand what their needs are and, and how they've interacted with the school system.
Good to see you again. Um, so my question is, what is your experience with community schools? And how do you think they would add value here in Pawtucket?
So, uh, interesting that you should ask that. My mom uh, started the first community school in Boston, which is the Gardner, um, elementary Gardner Pilot School now. Um, and certainly when I was a principal, I tried to also think about how do I do that um, as a leader, to really start uh, bringing in the community to the schools to better support the families and their needs. So um, I had a lot of experience on, on the, on the back end of leadership and on the front end of, end of leadership. It is definitely something that has really expanded in the Boston community. And um, as a leader, what I tried to do is find out what were the needs of my uh, students or the schools that I led and try to come up with partnerships that would best address their needs. Um, at that time, it was uh, mostly around mental health, trauma, um, as well as medical needs. Uh, even right now, uh, we have a lot of students coming to the Needham, not a lot, but we have students coming to Needham High School who can't play sports because they don't have um, access to a medical provider or resources. So we are trying to connect in the community around um, addressing that so that students can participate in another social event, especially when they're new to a building, new to a community. Uh, sports and outside club activities are really important. So um, partnering with um, all of the resources available through the Pawtucket schools, uh, universities that are close by and trying to meet their needs. Um, it, it made me think, I'm digressing a little bit, but um, today I was told that the CTE program is gonna expand to um, developing a pipeline for, um, well, I call it developing a pipeline for educators. So I'm excited about really thinking about how do we start um, thinking about our kindergartners and our preschoolers as future educators in Pawtucket. So um, really thinking about how do we do that? And that would involve bringing in community members, bringing in families to have these conversations. Because we need to do that in order to find the right people to work in our schools and with our kids. Thank you.
Hello, welcome. After looking at the Pawtucket School Department data, what do you see as the largest area for attention and growth?
So I'd like to spend a little bit more time looking at how our English learners are doing and performing. Um, it is my experience that when English learners um, uh, graduate from learning English, they tend to outperform their um, academic peers. And uh, one of the areas of concern um, that I couldn't quite get into all the details of is what is the breakdown within um, both race, uh, special education um, of what's underneath the data? Like where is the overlap of the students? Because I was curious about the progress of our white students, um, our black students, um, and our English learners. So um, I think there's more I need to unpack there. I really like data. I think it's really important that our staff understand what our data is saying. And um, given the access that I've had to it so far, it's only raised questions about what's happening with the data. Um, I have noticed that some schools are, uh, data is, is, you know, higher than other schools' data. So what, what are those practices? Um, I mentioned this before and I wholeheartedly believe this, is that we have great practices in Pawtucket. And we need to figure out how, how to share those practices and create opportunities for um, staff to visit each other and see what's happening in different schools, who's successful with what community. who's successful with what communities, and develop those practice classrooms where people can come and visit and learn and grow together. So I do have some questions. There are graduation rate, I think I saw today, was 72%, which is okay, but what's going on with that other percentage? So we need to continue to look at who's succeeding and who's not, and think about, how do we better support them?
Okay. As a superintendent, how often do you feel you should be visiting schools and be visible to the students and the staff there?
Daily. You know, you can, you have to be in the schools. You have to know what's going on.
So the second part of the question is, I put it back for no reason, but over the past few years, our administrative staff is bogged down with meeting. So they are going to a meeting at eight, another one at nine, another one at 10, and their days are consumed in meeting. How would you, given that schedule of meeting, how would you then go out and visit schools?
Well, one, the meeting could be at the school, and the meeting could involve visiting classrooms. So we have to put into practice. We can't be in a tower away from where the work is actually happening. The most important work that we do in a district is in a classroom. The most important people working with students are the teachers, and we need to figure out what's happening there, how to support them, how to build their practice so that our students can succeed.
Dr. McNeil, I will yield my time back to you in the sense of, during that interview with the search committee, is there anything that you wish to clarify now? Or is there something you want to say that you didn't have a chance to say during that interview? I'll yield my time back to you.
Thank you so much. Oh, there was a lot of reflection on what I said and what I could have said better. So I will say that I believe the reason I would like to come to Pawtucket is because I have gained a lot of experience through my work in Boston for 25 years as a teacher, as administrator, as a principal, and in central office, K to 12. I've also was able to gain more experience in central office by going to the Needham Public Schools and work on negotiations, and also system-wide structures and supports. I did do that work in Boston, in particular, around the budget. And another reason I would like to be able to lead this district is because I am an English learner. My parents came to this country and met, actually, and married in Boston. They are Cuban, and I am first generation. And I think we have many students who might have a similar story in this district. And I would like to support them and all other students in this district to succeed. I understand the struggle of being an immigrant and also, you know, seeking education and support. I have, I've had my own struggles with reading that had nothing to do with being an English learner, but more, I learned through my own children more about dyslexia and the struggles of what it is to overcome reading challenges. And I believe that all students can learn and grow, and we need to create the environment for them to do that. And from what I have seen in Pawtucket, there is will, there is desire, there's interest to collaborate and work together to improve this district from where it is to where it will go next. And everything that I have seen so far indicates that. So I appreciate the opportunity to kind of clarify my history a little bit and the struggles that I had in my own life, which there were many more. And just want to say that I continue to be a learner, and I don't believe that I have all the answers, but I know that there are a lot of people in this room who can come together and create better structures and systems to better support our students who might be struggling right now.
Thank you. So you, your experience has been in Massachusetts schools. I'm sure you're aware that there's been a lot of discussion about Rhode Island using the Massachusetts model about this idea that Rhode Island needs to move closer to what Massachusetts does in schools. I'd like to just hear your perspective on that, whether you agree wholeheartedly, whether you disagree, or whether it's somewhere in the middle.
So I'm quite familiar with both the standards and expectations and teacher evaluation and the evaluation process in Massachusetts. I don't, I don't think it's necessarily a bad system, but even that system has changed over time. I was in Massachusetts when the MCAS first came to be. I was a teacher through all of the iterations that it's currently been under, as well as the changes that have currently happened to raise expectations for our students in this last year. I'm not sure that I can give you a firm answer on that because I don't fully understand what is the expectation, how we're playing out what's happening in our, the standards here and the expectations around teacher evaluation here. I actually did try to delve into that, but it was, I didn't have Google access to certain things. So I do believe that we need to have standards. I do believe that we need to measure those standards, and I, we need that baseline to know if we're making progress for our students. But where I have a challenge is when, and I mentioned this before in the last interview, is then when we use those things to punish our schools and our communities and our students themselves. So there are good aspects to the work that's happening in Massachusetts, and there are challenges. So when we're holding English language learners to take a test in English one year after they're starting to learn a language, there's something wrong with that system. And then we're holding schools accountable for that. When students are in an alternative assessment and you get the points in Massachusetts for passing the alternative assessment, but yet it's considered a zero for the school, I have an issue with that. So it all, so there's pluses and minuses to all systems, and we need to figure out how to work either within that system or the system that is chosen to be worked with to make sure that we understand we're not putting students at risk and penalizing our schools and our staff because of it. So I have seen it play out in different ways.
Thank you. What is your expectations? What is, how do you see the relationship with the superintendent and the school committee? Communication-wise, how we interact, how, what do you see?
So I've seen some really good models of late that I would like to see in place. First, I'd like to make sure that there's opportunities for monthly visits to schools with the superintendent, going back to visiting schools. And so different schools, different members, so that we are both seeing what the needs are in the schools and what the good work that's happening in the schools. I also would like to see communication on a weekly basis to account for time, so where are, what, where is time being spent in the schools? With respect to the school committee, I'm not 100% sure of the processes, but I think you should receive packet, the Friday before school committee meeting with all the information in it that you can review so that you know what's coming up next. I think there should be meetings at least one week before with the chair and the superintendent to make sure that the agenda is clear and all the information we're preparing for the next meetings and going forward. So I'm very much aware that the responsibility of the school committee is to hire, fire, and evaluate the superintendent as well as the budgetary responsibilities. So it needs to be clear that we're communicating all of those aspects of the work, as well as developing policy that supports the good practice in the schools. So I think regular communication. I hope you hear that, as well as face-to-face visits in our schools is an important part of the work that we need to do together, as well as celebrate our students and our staff. So I hope we get a chance to do that here.
So I'd like to kind of switch over to budget. As we've seen over the past few years, a lot of the school districts received quite a bit of federal funds. Those funds were, you know, used for many things. But now that we're, you know, getting further and further away from COVID, those federal funds are going to stop. So how do you see you working with the budget on things that might have been put in and working with the city and the school committee on this, on our budgets?
Yeah, and I, that's a really good question, and I did hear conversations about that today regarding what some of the positions were that came in with the SR funds. I did try to ask which positions, have some of the positions already been turned over to the operating, and some have, but I'm also aware that some have not. And I do think that we need to look at, what are the positions that were not? And what are the, how do we prioritize those positions in terms of their impact to students and staff? And figure out, are there, are there ways to move, moving forward, to move some of those into operating? Or how do we seek one-time funds again to see if we need to support them? And also to look at our budget generally to see, is there a way to trim, if that is possible? Or rethink how we use certain positions or create certain positions to recoup any loss that people might feel as a result of not having access to SR funds anymore? So it's still something that I have a lot of questions about. And I couldn't delve that deeply in my one, two-hour, two-and-a-half-hour visit today. But we did get talking a little bit about that because I think that is a concern for all districts right now.
I do not have any more questions. Thank you so much.
You have spoken a bit about working with MLR students and being an MLR learner yourself. We do have a couple dual-language programs here. Could you please share with us your experience in leading dual-language programs?
So it's interesting. So I both supervise two dual-language schools in Boston, and I started a dual-language school when I was a principal in East Boston. And I asked about some of the challenges that I faced when I was looking at dual-language schools. One is that didn't, no one raised these flags to me here. These were my personal experiences in doing this work. One is sharing with, in my case, it was Spanish-speaking families, that we want to support literacy in the native language and that that won't make them, won't allow students to fall behind, that it actually will support their development of English in the future. So that was a challenge that I saw, not hugely. Mostly, I found that in East Boston, many of our Spanish-speaking families wanted their students to be able to maintain their home language and become literate in English. The other was fear from some of our non-Spanish-speaking families as to whether or not it would impair their students' ability to learn and grow in English, and would it impact their scores on different types of tests. So we did a lot of education around dual-language programs and the benefits of dual-language education and the opportunity that it brings students in the future. So those are some of the challenges that we face. The other was about hiring staff and finding staff who can teach the other language. And there's where, again, I think, pipeline thinking about who is currently in our district, how do we support our non-English-speaking community members to consider becoming teaching assistants, maybe becoming teachers here, or developing our own students to become teachers in the future? So really thinking about that pipeline and creating opportunities for students to think about education as future, which we need to promote. What was the rest of the question? I'm sorry.
Unless there's anything else. About your experience leading dual-language programs.
Because I'll say, there's more to that because also, assessment in both languages is something that you have to do. And Massachusetts has done some good work around the seal of bilinguality and giving students an opportunity to graduate through a dual-language program, K to 12, and having a celebration of multilingual ability, which I think is also something that we need to think about as we're growing our students in the elementary program.
Thank you. There's under two minutes for a 30-minute time. Do you have any questions?
Last thing, question. So as you've seen, as you've traveled the district today, you visited two refurbished schools. We have another one that was just built. We have another one being built. And then we are in the process of working on a unified high school. So what is your experience with building, construction, and new schools?
Well, I, sorry to say that it wasn't in Boston. With 129 schools, it took a long time to build schools in Boston. But in Needham, we are doing a lot of construction. I am not leading that work, but I'm certainly privy to that work. So this would be my, probably my biggest learning edge is to really get more hands-on with this. In our newest building, named after Sanita Williams, who is an astronaut who grew up and went to the Needham Public Schools, and is an astronaut right now, she's going up. We did have some HVAC systems, but I think that Pawtucket might be familiar with some of these challenges. So, and that was just built in the last year. I think we've been in that building for two years. And we're currently renovating the central office building that was much needed. So we are currently under construction. What I have seen works best is working closely with the community and the builders and being part of the process all along the way to make sure that we are learning from our mistakes and thinking about the future and how we can make most of the resources that the city is giving us.
Thank you very much. That's the time. So you heard about the firing HVAC systems in our city?
Just a little.
All right. Doctor, thank you very much. I will afford you two minutes. The other candidate was, do you have any parting words to us? If you can keep it under two minutes to the board that you want to speak to us.
Okay. So first, I just want to thank Dr. Jacobs, Mrs. Depot, Superintendent Mercer, Assistant Superintendent Ramsey, for, and all of the people that I met today for their time. their interest, their enthusiasm for the work here in Patucket. I believe that I bring certain skills and abilities that will support the work that's happening here in Patucket. But I certainly hope that you will make the decision that you feel is the best for the Patucket Public Schools. And I really want the best for the students here. They are cared for, they are loved. People work really hard. That was evident in the building visits that I did today. There is passion for the work here and commitment. And that is something that needs to be celebrated and used to promote the good work that's happening here. So I just thank you very much for this opportunity to be able to speak here. And, and I'm very happy to see the excitement and enthusiasm and the interest that the community has in the next superintendent. And I hope that you'll give me the opportunity to think about how I could do that more in the future. So thank you so much.
Thank you all very much for that. Can I, can I do one more? I'm sorry. All right. Can I get a motion to recess to executive session in accordance to general law, pursuant to general law, 42-46-A, dash five A1, for the discussion of superintendent candidate's qualification, one. Second reason, prudent to, pursuant to Rhode Island general law, 42-46, dash five A, section eight, student appeal. Do I have a motion? Mr. Chavino moves to adjourn, seconded by Ms. Dube. Clerk, all those in favor? All opposed? We're in recess for executive.